And we have moved that until March. Our finance director is out sick today.
Oh.
But we've been able to confirm that it will not change our ability to implement rates for effective January first.
Okay. All right, well, that's good to know.
I think I drove her to mental breakdown.
It wasn't you.
I could see that happening. I could see that happening.
I like you too, Mayor.
Well, looks like you get the limelight tonight then. So we're gonna talk about item number three, which is personnel policy updates.
Yes. Um, so this is my favorite time of year. I always bring policies towards the end of the year. This year, I'm proposing a pretty large overhaul to just put the policies in what I think is a more applicable order. The most important policies kind of come first, the ones that have to deal with laws that you want to follow, anti-harassment, data practices, stuff like that. So you'll see that they're in a different order. They are either red or blue lined, just depending on changes. And then I am going to propose numbering them so that when we reference them, they will have a name and a, and a number. I apologize that I didn't do it on the packet, but I'd like to include page numbers too, so that going forward, we would be able to just update a policy as needed, pull it out, put the new one in, and it'll just allow those changes to happen more efficiently. So that's kind of the overhaul. On the council report, I indicated the policies that had changes. And there's really just a few that I'd like feedback on to make sure that we are doing the best changes for the city. And that is our earned sick and safe time and our PTO policies. So those are the two major ones I'd love feedback on. If you have any questions, I'm open to have this workshop however you want to see fit. Do you want to ask questions about policies? Do you want me to give you my spiel? What, what would you prefer?
Well, I think that, um, yeah, I'm not really sure. Either way, I do have some questions, but.
I have some questions too. I read through it in detail because I have a lot of time. And I let the raise all kinds of questions and problems. One question I had with the, the change where employees can use up to forty hours of their unused vacation to go into a, like a retirement plan or benefit planning. Has there been an estimate of the cost to that, increased costs a result of that?
That is one piece that we don't necessarily have today with the finance director being ill. Currently, they are allowed to do forty hours of their, the current policy, they can do forty hours in deferred comp, which is the retirement plan. And we were just looking to increase that to allow people to not lose as many hours at the year end. You will notice that the department heads and I had a meeting today, so that has actually been updated a little bit, and that would be one of the policies I just left at your seat. We pulled the option to do cash, and we just are allowing a hundred hours up to a hundred hours for the year being in deferred comp or health savings account. So the finance director's feedback was to not provide a cash out option due to the tax implications.
Right. So, um, is that hundred hours similar to what, um, let's say this, this state system has? Cause I think my previous experience was in eighty hours. And is that what we currently have is eighty hours?
Currently, we have forty.
Yeah.
And that's why I like this workshop. We can talk about, well, I'm, we have forty, I'm okay with eighty. I don't want to do a hundred. That's, I want your feedback on that.
So, I mean, I'm okay with a certain amount, but at some point in time, I think we need to also let the employees know that that's what PTO is for, vacation time is to take off and use that. I mean, that's a benefit. So I'm, I'm not entirely on board with taking a hundred hours and throwing it into a comp plan. Because I, I'd rather have them spend time with their family or fishing or hunting or relaxing or reading or whatever they do to recharge than just stuffing it into MSRS or something like that. That's my, my personal opinion.
Yeah, I didn't see this question. So we changed from forty hours, which was less, was in the packet to a hundred hours.
Um, I think in the packet, it was a hundred and twenty hours, and we lowered it to a hundred, and we removed the cash out option. So they can put it into deferred comp or health savings account.
Yeah, I, I think eighty hours, absolutely. I mean, that's two weeks worth of work. That's, and especially if we're looking at, um, firefighters are diff, are they on a different?
They're on there, and I'm proposing that we allow their carryover to be three hundred hours due to their, they have a higher accrual because they are required to take twenty-four hours off to cover the entire shift. So their current, our current carryover is two hundred and forty hours. For city staff, I did not change that carryover amount, but I propose increasing the firefighters' carryover amount to three hundred hours.
Okay.
So, on the, the red, red line that was in a package, they can convert up to forty hours of vacation. To IRS deferred, MRS deferred comp, convert up to forty hours to vacation leave to wages, to offset the cost of benefits, and convert up to forty hours of leave to a health savings account. So I assume you can only, you can only convert forty hours, not a hundred and twenty.
Well, we, in the redlined option, we were allowing people to put forty, forty hours in each bucket.
In each bucket, okay. I understood that. Okay, I thought it was forty in one bucket, and that was it. Okay. Okay.
And I guess I'd, I think a hundred hours is quite a bit. So, I mean, old school me is like, forty is what I've always, in my career, been used to when I was a state and county. So, I mean, even eighty is quite a bit. It's two weeks. Especially when you're accruing, you know, seven and a half. I mean, on the median, you're earning a day every two weeks.
Would it, um, would it be helpful if we brought back information on other cities? Would that help at all?
That's fine. I mean, I just don't, I don't think that that's, you can, um,
So.
Just on the gist of it, two and a half weeks is a lot of time.
What is, what is the current policy?
Current policy is you can carry over two hundred and forty hours, and you can cash out forty to deferred comp.
Forty to deferred comp?
Yep.
Okay.
So if you're over two hundred and eighty hours at the end of the year, and you haven't used it, you just lose those hours.
Okay.
That in each year, you could cash out forty?
Yes.
To bring you down?
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, I'll be honest. I wonder if it was at the county where you had that experience, because Mape does not have that at all.
No.
With Mape, you can cash out at the end of your time with your vacation.
Right, right.
There's no help to bring down.
Yeah. So is there any allowance for the supervisor to say sometimes, you know, in public works, they've got extra time, or if they're required extra time in planning for the supervisor to say, I'm gonna, okay, more time on this, and you can put it in the comp? Cause it really should be up to the supervisor to, um, manage that.
Do you mean for comp time earned or on the PTO? Yes, so under our current policy, the staff and the supervisor can agree whether any overtime hours are going to be paid out or put into a comp time.
Okay.
What is the MSRS deferred compensation plan?
That is the Minnesota State Retirement for Fifty-Seven Plan. It's basically like the government's version of a 401K.
Okay.
Five oh three B or something like that.
Okay, thank you. I didn't, wasn't sure what it was. I don't have a problem with the deferred compensation or the health savings account contribution. I think I'm kind of with a hundred dollars, seems like a lot to put in.
Well, I just, and it, it's to the point that they get a lot of, I mean, in my viewpoint, get a lot of vacation, use it, right? Cause if they're not using that, and they're getting more time, so we're almost like adversely saying, hey, work more, and you can put it in MSRS or something else.
Yeah.
I don't know.
No, I, I think that's good feedback. I did put some provisions in there that if they want to cash it out, they have to have taken some, because I agree. I don't want people to say, I'm never taking vacation, because I want to cash it out.
Yeah.
So they have to have taken at least sixty hours of vacation to be eligible for the conversion.
Yeah. I think the max I'd want to go is eighty, to be honest. And I still think that's very, uh,
Generous?
Generous.
I agree. That sounds good. So I can make that update. Then.
I'm in like a forty to sixty myself.
That's, I mean, I'm, I'm just trying to.
Not zero. It's one of those things. I'd be curious how, cause what, we probably won't vote on this until the new year.
Right.
So I'd be curious how that would.
I'm hoping to vote on it in December, actually, the next meeting. Um, so that we can have it implemented.
And obviously, in the case of the HSA, the reason for that is because tax-wise, it's treated the same as the deferred comp with MSRS.
Yes.
Right?
Yeah.
So, question, because the state changed some law on employers needing to provide separate, is it PTO and sick leave?
Yes, so that's why we're kind of hashing these policies out. So the state implemented earned sick and safe time, which started January first of twenty twenty-four. And when they laid out the statute originally in twenty twenty-three, they indicated that if your PTO was generous enough to cover all of the requirements, which is forty-eight hours of sick leave, you could combine it. And then in May of twenty twenty-four, they changed the statute to say that if you have combined it, then all of the E S S T regulations now need to pertain to your PTO hours. So that can be concerning.
I'm sorry, E S S T?
Earned sick and safe time.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So, under the earned sick and safe time, you can use that for any leave to take care of yourself, your family members, and how they define family is pretty broad.
Yeah.
You don't need to provide a doctor's note. You don't need to provide your replacement. So if we're having shift work for our on-call, um, public works employees, or the shifts for the firefighters, under our current policy, if somebody wanted to take a vacation day, they could switch with somebody, or we could have them kind of find their replacement. Under earned six and safe time, we cannot do that anymore. And then if attendance becomes an issue, you certainly can't retaliate against anyone for taking sick leave. So it's, the combined policy makes it difficult to prevent people from just always calling in sick versus planning their vacation and taking time off and ahead of time, and giving supervisors the opportunity to fill those shifts and prepare for that time off.
Mayor, we were talking about our non-exempt employees, right?
Yes.
So we're not even really, because the union covers the public works department.
It does, but they don't specify, so they do follow these policies.
And if they go overtime, they get paid time and a half, right?
Or the comp time. They do have the comp time option.
And an hour and a half?
Uh, yes, yep.
It is, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, so these cities here in your salary and benefits survey, where you've got Hopkins, Hugo, us, they're gonna have to change that, right?
Well, I was just trying to look, it's, it's interesting because cities in history used to have separate sick and vacation time. And then about five to six years ago, it became more popular to merge it into one. And now with this E S S T, the earned sick and safe time changes, you're gonna see a lot of the cities, from the feedback I've gotten just from reaching out to the League of Minnesota City groups, that they're gonna separate it back out again.
Right.
So, in the document that was on, in our packet, it said that they couldn't carry, they, they're eligible to carry over accrued but unused E S T time, but in this one, it says they're gonna get paid out.
Yes, so we had a three-hour meeting with the department heads today just to hash out these policies to make sure that what I was presenting to you was the best for the city. And we thought that we would prefer having separate policies, so we have a vacation and an earned sick and safe time. And after much discussion, we're proposing having forty-eight hours of accrued earned sick and safe time available to all staff on January first. And if they don't use it, then it would be paid out. The statute suggests three different options, so that was one of the options. The other option is to earn one hour for every thirty hours worked, accrue it throughout the year, and then carry it over. There's third option is to allow people to have eighty hours as of January first, and then use it or lose it.
I, I think the, the option you have in, in the red line, um, you know, just, or, you know, and the one tonight, just pay it out, is a, you know, i- is a good option in, in my book, because it creates an incentive to come to work.
To pay it out?
Yeah.
The new one I just provided.
Yeah, the other one, if you, if you lose it, people say, well, I'm gonna call in sick because I lose it. When I was, in my experience, you know, we had a similar situation up in the city of Virginia, where people could accumulate sick leave up to a hundred and fifty days or something, and then they quit accumulating it. When they got to a hundred and fifty days, they would just thought as vacations, call in sick, because I'm not gonna get it. You know, if they, if they called in sick, then they would get it back, basically, maintain that a hundred and fifty days. But they used it, in my experience, is you create that incentive if you, you know, if you, if you don't give them something for not using it.
That was kind of the discussion today as well, and there was concerns that if it's use it or lose it, then come November, December, that is when everyone's gonna be suddenly taking their times off. And that's the snowy season for the public works department. The fire department obviously needs to have a standard of at least two people on, so we were.
So is there a max accrual of sick time? It's eighty, eighty hours a year?
The max that's required is forty-eight. So under the new statute, you have to provide at least forty-eight. You can be more generous if you want. If you want to carry it over, you can allow accrual up to eighty. So the statute kind of recommends that you front-load it forty-eight and pay it out, or front-load eighty and don't pay it out. Or accrue it per hour, and then you can either pay it out or carry it over.
We, Mape, so the way Mape, for reference, Mape is the, the state union, but, um, it's four hours every two weeks, and then it does not change no matter your seniority, whereas the vacation rate then.
Right.
Yeah. And you, and then sick time can be cashed out when you leave into your health savings account.
And then, but over a certain dollar, it's a percentage of the city, right? It's like forty percent.
Yeah, it's not the whole thing. Whereas vacation time can cash out in a different way.
Right.
Yeah.
So Jeff, I apologize. Did you say four hours per week or per paid period?
Per paid period, for every two weeks.
For every two weeks.
So that's six days per year.
Yeah.
So it, it's gone through a couple of different iterations. When I was there, it was, uh, up to nine hundred hours. You cash that out. For a while there, you cash out four hundred and fifty hours, fifty percent of it cash. And then they went fifty percent to HSA. And then I think over nine hundred hours, I mean, I had some guys working for me that had like sixteen hundred and fifty hours of sick leave. Because the benefit of that was that every, and then everything over nine hundred hours, they would get like thirty percent into their HSA, right? So even though it's not a hundred percent payout, they're getting money put right into a health savings account that's taxed free for them when they retire. So some people treated it as a benefit as such, and some people misused it and would, because they would say, I want to get paid a hundred percent. And they would say, well, I'm gonna be sick on Friday. I'm like, oh, you got a doctor appointment or something? No, I'm just gonna be sick on Friday. So, that, um, it gets tricky. I always want to give people the benefit of the doubt on how they do it, but so we're saying we're just gonna give them on January one, how much?
Forty-eight hours.
Eight hours, yeah.
Forty-eight hours, which is six days.
Six days, yeah. Yeah. I think that's a, that's a reasonable allocation. Because you have, you have the longer term leave if someone, just really if someone gets, has another issue. But I, you know, I know other cities that, at least a couple others, that the unused, um, sick leave goes into a, um, health savings account. Which they can, which is, they don't see as a benefit initially, but actually, after they have it for a while, they do, it becomes a big benefit.
Substantial, yeah. And I made a mistake. It's not the sick time for Mape, it's the vacation time that goes into the health savings.
Really?
Yeah. Hundred, one hundred percent of vacation pay converted to a MSRS health care savings plan, which is interesting. Yeah, I, I would, I would agree with that, because it, again, a lot of, I wouldn't have thought when I was twenty-two about health savings accounts. Like, that's just not something that happened in that year. It certainly didn't happen in the eighties and the nineties, but I think as, as society becomes more acutely aware of health costs, I, I support that, and I think it is a, a very good option to have that. And it is, like, we're, we're doing our part to at least make sure that's part of the conversation. And it's not everyone, again, is even considering that, and that's fine. That's totally okay, but I, I think that is a rational way to do it.
Do we have a health savings account for our employees right now?
We do not participate in the MSRS health savings account for our city staff. The union has an account with them. So this health savings account would just be if you have elected the health savings plan with our medical plan. But that is something that we've been talking about. The, can, I don't know if it's a concern or not, but if you elect the MSRS health savings account for city staff, then that becomes mandatory. So Jeff, I might ask, at the end of the year, do you guys have to put it in there if you're over?
We are, all Mape employees are required for every paycheck to put a percent into the HSA, and that started at least a decade ago.
Okay. And so that would be something that, as a city, we could decide to do, but then it, staff no longer have the option of, well, I'd like to put my vacation leave into my deferred comp or my health savings account. It, it would be chosen for them or directed for them.
Do we not have HSA accounts with our, uh, health plan?
We do, but not everybody's on that plan. So.
Is that a high deductible?
Yes, yep. So we offer two plans, the high deductible plan and a copay plan, and you can't have a health savings account if you have a copay plan.
Yeah, that's, I think that's similar to what.
Yes.
So if an employee decided to, you know, let's say they didn't take any sick leave, so they could get paid out for forty-eight hours at the end, could they put, and they were in the high deductible, could they put that in the HSA?
Are you talking about vacation payout or the earned sick and safe? So, as it's written, the earned sick and safe leave right now, we were just planning to cash out on your last paycheck.
Okay.
So if we wanted to offer that going into a retirement account as well, we could kind of play around with that.
Well, health savings accounts, not necessarily a retirement account, though.
You can use them.
Correct.
I, I was just thinking, if I, if I'm employing in the HSA, I have the high deductible plan, I already have the HSA, could I find a way to deflect this forty-eight hours of pay into my HSA if I choose?
Not as it's written right now.
Okay.
I think that would be a pretty good option.
I just will add that during our department head discussion today, we did bring up the state healthcare savings plan, and the majority of them were not interested in that. However, I do think that maybe we could, um, get some more program information and bring it up.
Well, it's actually,
what do you think?
There was feedback that they wanted to be able to control where that money went and, and put it in their own deferred comp. But if we were just adjusting the earned sick and safe time, I think as a city, we could just say, well, we are gonna elect the MSRS healthcare savings plan, and if your, your earned sick and safe time are unused, it automatically goes into that plan. That would also save on any tax implications.
We put a capital O R and say, if you're in the high deductible, we can put it in your health HSA as opposed to the state plan?
I don't think we could. I'd, I'd want to ask MSRS that question.
Okay.
Because we would have to develop a contract with them, and typically, if we want to elect money to go into them, then that is mandatory.
Got it.
I have a question for you, Carissa. If we had that state healthcare savings plan, which the unused E S S T hours could go into, can we just have that for that? Or if you sign up for that, do you have to have employees contribute to it?
I think it could just be for the earned sick and safe time cash out. I know, I know, I shouldn't say, I think, I know that we can just do one. It's just how the city develops the contract.
I think from the employee's perspective, it's probably, i- i- I think some may say, well, why can't they just have the cash? And but again, it's, it's pretty much neutral, because no health plan covers a hundred percent. So, you know, from your HSA, you can buy all kinds of things that they're currently paying money out of their pocket for, aspirin or whatever. And, um, dental eyeglasses, what, all those kinds of things. So it is, it does provide a, a benefit that way, but.
Well, and the nice thing is that's a non-taxed
Yeah.
Dollar value. So if you cash it out, you're hitting that higher percentage cash out. In HSA, you're getting all of it pretty much in there.
Yeah.
And it's earning very good interest and accruals right now. I, in the case of MSRS, depending upon the, where you, because you have the choice to allocate if you're in the MSRS healthcare savings, you can choose how you allocate it, and there are plans that are getting eight to ten percent over the last several years, not just during inflation, but I, I would be curious then, in the non-MSRS ones, so for the people who have the.
The deferred comp?
The deferred comp right now, like what, um, options do they have for choosing how they want it?
Um, I wouldn't be able to tell you off the top of my head, but they do get to choose. It's, they can.
Similar to like a twenty fifty plan, a twenty forty plan, a twenty thirty plan, a high risk.
Or individually, if they just want to say, I want the Vanguard, such and such, they can, they can choose that as well.
I think that, that would be a, something, sounds like something the council would be supportive of.
Yeah. Of the three options, I, I like the one that's there right now, the forty-eight hours to start.
Yep.
Of the, I don't like the other, yeah, I don't like the other two.
I think that's, makes the most sense. Good thinking, Carissa.
Well, I appreciate your feedback, and thank you for hashing it out.
The other one.
I liked all the changes for the complaints and stuff to come to you. I think we had talked about that previously, so it's good to see that's in there now.
Yeah, I thought all that was good. I, I first read through the, um, the pronouns thing. I started worrying a little bit about what if we have someone who has a religious conflict with that. But then I did my own research and found out, it don't matter, they have to honor it. So, and that was my only concern. I, I think if someone wants to be called a particular, if, if Jeff wants, want me, wants me to call him Harry, I'll call him Harry, you know, just out of respect. But I was worried about the conflict, and then I, as I said, I read it and found out that it doesn't matter what your religion is, please, sir, if you, if someone wants to be called, they them or whatever, you have to call them, they them. So that took, put my, my only fear away.
Well, that's good. I'm glad. And I did, I know last year when we updated this, there was some concern about having both the harassment and the respectful workplace, so I did try to just merge that and make it just, I was also trying to be more concise so that the policy isn't too long.
I thought that all was very good.
Concur. Uh, it's, to me, it's pretty straightforward to show respect to others, so I, I don't, I don't have a lot more to say on that. In terms of smoking tobacco and related questions, out of curiosity, where, what are staff thoughts in terms of, because obviously, it's explicitly clear in terms of smoking of tobacco, and what is, what is the position? What is the position then in terms of, now that it is legal and it'll only increase in terms of usage, marijuana?
Do you mean our, like, use policy on it?
In terms of, obviously, usage during work hours, usage on, obviously, it's not allowed on site.
It's not allowed on public property. It's not allowed on pub, on public property.
And then also if you have a scent of it, but you're on work hours. Because I, the whole testing bit is a whole other thing, and I'm not, I don't want to get in that can of worms, but what would be the position if an employee comes in and that employee does work with the public and it's clear and evident that usage has occurred simply due to scent?
So when the cannabis law went into effect, I did update our alcohol use policy to include cannabis. So much like we don't allow people to drink on the job or show up drunk, we don't allow them to use cannabis on the job or show up high. I don't know that we have anything in our policies that addresses a cigarette smoker and whether if my cube mate smokes and I smell that after their lunch break and that irritates me, that would probably just become an HR issue that we would address. I don't think we have any policies specifically that state that you can't, that to me would be a fragrance-free policy, meaning that people couldn't use strong-scented lotions or perfumes, you know, that, that kind of falls into that. Um, if someone were to show up smelling like cannabis, which would lead us to be reasonably suspicious of their being high, I would treat that as an, on, like a suspicion drug testing.
I like, I like use of reasonable suspicion. Brings me back to my day job. And obviously then in the case of gummy use, where you have no scent, it would still come down to if there's a reasonable suspicion based on behavior and.
Correct.
If you're able to perform your job or not.
Correct. And that would be for any legal substance. If somebody is using a pain reliever and they seem a little aloof, right? I mean, we don't allow any drug use.
They had a surgery and they're on.
Right.
Something to alleviate the pain and they're acting a little wonky.
Correct.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Well, I appreciate reading through all of this. Is there any more questions on any of the policies?
We just need to, so what are we cool with on the converting of hours? Because you said less than, and, I mean, I came down to eighty just, just because a hundred seems like so much, but really, I'm in that forty to sixty range as well, I guess, now that I think about it. Again, just, just for people to make sure that they take the time off they need it, otherwise, some people just don't.
Correct.
Well, and I guess I'd be curious, i- if, if they're, you have an employee who, say, is in the twenty-five years or more and they're accumulating thirteen hours every two weeks, and literally has not used a single hour after six or seven months, is there, is it a norm, is there an expectation that there would be a conversation to be like, Bill? Like, it's okay, like, this is actually here for your mental health. What, regardless of, there might be a family, might not, like, an encouragement? Is there, is there a, a position as to where that would come into play? Like, I assume those conversations happen. It's not necessarily a policy thing, it's more so a best practice, like, please, do what's best for you, that's why we. I, I agree with the mayor, we, we have vacation hours not for the purpose of building and accruing and then transferring out. We have them for their, their well-being to be used throughout the year.
I believe we do, and I, I would assume most directors are having those conversations. I don't think we have anybody that doesn't use any of their time, but it's, sometimes it comes into play, especially with the fire department and the public works department, that on certain occasions, we can't allow PTO to be taken because we have a big snow issue or we had that huge fire that took twelve hours to put out. And so we, obviously, the first thing would be that we want to encourage people to take it, but then if we can't have them taking it to the full ability, is it seem to penalize them if they use it at the end of the year?
Well, can we agree on dropping that to sixty hours?
I'm, I'm fine dropping it to sixty and we'll wait to hear from the other two.
What do you think, Councilmember Dragasic?
Well, I was leaning to forty because I'm conservative, but.
Yeah.
I would, um, I would, I'd go along with sixty if that's the consensus of my associates.
I get, I think it's more, it, it's more generous than most, if not all places that I know that I've ever been, so. Um, I think it's pretty generous.
I appreciate the feedback.
I think it'd also be a good thing then anytime there's a new position that comes up for posting and those interviews are happening, hey, you're considering another city, guess what we just changed? And I think that might put a person on the top for who they're, who they're deciding on, because I agree, this, I mean, I would take a guess, it's, it's definitely more robust than other availability, especially other comparable cities.
Okay. Is there anything else we really need to do to address?
I think we hit on.
Everything else seemed pretty straightforward to me.
I thought everything else was real good.
Yeah.
Nice job, very nice job.
Thank you.
The amount of updates, making sure everything's aligned with statute, like, it's a lot of work, so thank you for all that.
You are welcome.
Okay. So you have enough to go on there?
I do, thanks.
All right. So future agenda items, we'll come back to the utility financial management plan updates. Anything else that I should be aware of or we should be aware of? It says future agenda items.
No.
Why, why are we leaning at all March?
Well, we, yeah, good question. Um, we looked at our available work session dates.
Yeah.
And, um.
So we have work sessions in January related to our strategic plan. And then February, we're doing combined with planning commission and the parks commission, correct?
Um, the January one is now open because we moved the parks commission.
Oh, till after a strategic plan?
But then I also wanted to point out that we do have goal setting, um, Wednesday and Thursday night.
Yeah.
So we just removed that, so we were kind of like, maybe the council doesn't want to do three nights in a row.
It's fine.
I don't want to do three nights in a row. Well, actually, I can, so.
No, it's fine, March is fine. I was just, it was more of a question, not a complaint.
Yeah.
All right. Given that, uh, I think I'll adjourn the meeting early this evening at seven, ten PM. Thank you.